Justice.
Okay, I'll do the roll call. Chairman Freeland.
Yeah.
Member Cornelius.
Yeah.
Member Grinberger.
Yeah.
Member Hock.
Here.
Ad hoc member Shandalheim.
Here.
Ad hoc member Friedman.
Yeah.
And member Roth is absent this evening. Okay, was everyone able to, you didn't have time at the last meeting to look at the July minutes?
Yeah, so I read, I read both minutes, including the ones you sent today in the email.
Okay, that was September 30th, the one in the packet was July 22nd.
There was no meeting August.
No, that one was canceled.
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion to approve those minutes, both, can I do both one shot?
You have to do one, one at a time.
One more from.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from July, what was the date?
July 22nd.
July 22nd, 2021, for the second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And now I need the motion for the September.
We need, um. To include a fifth voting number tonight, don't we?
Yes, you do need a voting member.
Okay, so I see Morris, first one I see here. So I'd like to include Morris as a voting member tonight.
Okay.
You up for that?
Yes, and I need a.
Do we redo that approval of minutes?
For September 30th?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 30th, 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. All right, we can go to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Prime Pro Management LLC. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Well.
You have to, they're requesting an adjournment to the November meeting, we have to.
Okay, is it two motions, one to continue and one to adjourn, or just one motion to adjourn?
It's a motion to continue, to adjourn. The, that item. To a specific date and time.
Okay.
So what date is that?
It's November 22nd because we just determined it before we got on.
Okay.
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 At 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
Seven or 7:30?
Seven, 7:00 PM.
Okay, and that's via Zoom. And it's Monday due to the fact that it falls on Thanksgiving. Just for the month of just our normal, regular meeting falls on Thanksgiving, so the Monday, November 22nd.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, so redo the motion, I'll make the motion to adjourn. The public hearing for Prime Pro Management LLC, that's the gas station, 194 Route 59. To November, to the November 22nd, 2021 Planning Board Meeting, which will be 7:00 PM on a Monday via Zoom.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Just for the knowledge of anyone who, from the public, and for the board for that matter. That motion makes it so that no new. Public hearing notice has to be sent out or posted. This is the only notice, only formal notice. It'll be on agendas and the website, et cetera, but it won't have to be re-advertised. Because it was continued to date and time and method. Specified.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Okay, so I make a motion to.
You just need to read the next agenda.
The next item on the agenda.
Yeah. So yeah, the next item on the agenda is Central UTA of Muncie. They want a ministerial amendment change to a previously approved planning board resolution, or a previously approved amended site plan. Okay, do we open this, or?
No, there's no public hearing required.
There's no public hearing on this.
A public hearing, okay. There's no motions necessary.
Does the applicant want to tell everyone what's going on?
Mr. Emmanuel. For Mr. Emmanuel to unmute.
There he is.
Okay, there you are. Hi, Ira.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. As the board may recall, back in the, in the late spring, summer, we appeared before you for amendment to the site plan to allow the. The construction and replacement of certain buildings. That site plan approval, or amended site plan approval, or whatever was granted. One of the conditions that was imposed, which is a fairly normal condition, was that we comply with and obtain necessary permits from other outside agencies. As the board is also aware, the purpose of the amendment and the purpose of the approvals that we sought was so that we could provide. Space for the students that are educated and to be educated at this site. We have been, the school has been diligently trying to obtain necessary permits. In particular, we've been having some difficulty obtaining some of the permits simply because of bureaucratic lagging. Things take, that's not a criticism, it just is a recognition that things take time. When we made our initial application for this relief that we're seeking this, this evening. Well, let me back up a second, the, the condition that was imposed was that the permits be obtained prior to the signing of the site plan by the chairman. We, we are experiencing some difficulties, some, some time lags. In particular, we had asked with respect to a Rockland County Highway permit, which is needed in order to put in the new emergency exit. An entrance that was approved by the board. We also need an ESA waiver from the United States Environmental Protection Agency in order to hook up to the sewers. And we also need a connection, a permit and connection approval from the Department of Health and from Suez Water in order to connect for, for water. Just two days ago, we were able to obtain the work permit from the Rockland County Highway Department, and so that is no longer an issue, but we still have the issue. With respect to obtaining the ESA waiver for the sewer connection and the permits and approvals for the water connection. Both of those connections currently exist for the, the current buildings. However, because we're replacing the buildings and putting in replacement connections, we need new permits on both the sewer and the water. We're asking the board to amend its, that condition of the resolution. So that the site plan can be signed and so the construction can be, begin. Prior to obtaining those two permits, with the understanding, and this is also in our request. That no certificate of occupancy would be issued unless and until those two permits are taken care of. And so that's what we're asking for this evening. It's not a matter of any kind of safety issues or things that would necessarily delay. Construction, the truth is, is that unless we get these permits, unless we have the connections for water and sewer, we can't get a CVO anyway. But by giving us this relief and allowing the school to begin construction, or allowing the, the site plan to be signed, and then the school to begin construction. You could be saving the school anywhere from two to four months. On, on their construction, a construction schedule which will take approximately eight months. The school wants to be able to get in so that it can start using the, the new buildings at the beginning of the September 2022 school year. And if we can't get this kind of relief, we may not be able to make that deadline, and so that's why we're here this evening.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Okay. Now, if you're making the, the approval of the CVO contingent upon these conditions being met, so then you're starting construction at your own risk?
Correct.
Running the risk that you may not get these approvals from those agencies.
And I would say, and to be perfectly honest, we think it's a very, very small risk, given that the connections already exist for the existing buildings.
Like you said, there's no, there's no reason to.
It's a timing issue.
There's no reason to think you're not going to get these approvals.
Not as far as we can, as far as we can determine, no.
Any questions?
I think I'm good with it.
Okay. Just to remind you, this is not a public hearing, so this won't be open to the public. Anybody else?
And just, just to clarify, the reason this isn't a public hearing is because it's a ministerial amendment that's being requested, it doesn't change the project. Doesn't change the impacts of the project, it's just a sequencing issue.
That's correct, we're not, we are not changing a single line on any of the drawings.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Um, the only other question is exactly which agencies are you still waiting for? Answers from?
My understanding is that it's the US EPA on the ESA waiver, which then translates to, I guess, around PoDPW or Rockland County Sewer District for the sewer connection. And then Suez Water and the Rockland County Health Department for the water connection.
Okay. And that said, no more, that you're aware.
I'm, I'm not aware of any others, Mr. Cornelius.
Okay.
And those will be the only two that are in the updated resolution. Only two conditions that are specified.
As I said, I'm not aware of any others, it's possible that there may be, I'm not aware of any others. So we'd rather that it not be listed, limited to those two, but those are the two that we, that we know about, or that I know about.
Well, the way the resolution is written. It states that the only remaining permits are for sewer and water. And that this resolution and the determination the board makes, if they vote on, if they vote for this, is based upon that understanding. So if there are other approvals, we need to know that. And we would need, the board would need to consider whether or not those approvals have health and safety implications prior to construction.
As I, as I said, the only two that I'm aware of are the ones for the sewer and the water connection. You know, obviously you draft a resolution the way that you feel is appropriate, and I guess that if something else pops up, we'll have to return to the board if that becomes an issue.
Okay.
Okay. And so Jody, just to be clear, those two are what are mentioned in the resolution, just looking at it now, I'm.
It's under one of the whereas clauses, so it's the basis of your determination. Says that the only remaining outstanding approvals relate to sewer and water connections to the new building. It's on page two, the third whereas.
Let's see, water and sewer connections to the building 14, okay. Okay, I see that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, so I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve this ministerial amendment change from.
Well, should we read the resolution into the record, or?
Is it in the record yet?
Well, you, don't you, didn't you say you had it?
I have it.
Okay, maybe we should read it. Record, so we have a record of.
I don't know what your board typically does. Do you typically read through all the where asses, or do you want to read just the enumerated amendments, condition numbers one and two on the bottom of two to three?
I think that would probably be best, and then, because this is all clearly going to be part of the record, the minutes anyhow, the resolution.
Right, so if you, you, I believe unless Dan, you could correct me, you could start with the now therefore be resolved.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I just read it, now therefore be resolved, the planning board of the Village of Ammon hereby amends the original resolution as follows. Number one, condition two of the original resolution shall be stricken and shall be replaced with the following language. Issuance of any certificate occupancy for the project is conditioned upon applicant complying with all outstanding conditions. From any other governmental agency, as well as receiving all approvals required by other governmental approving agencies without material deviation from the approved plans. Evidence of compliance with conditions and any such approvals must be submitted to the village planning and building department. And all of the terms of the original resolution shall remain in full force and effect.
Okay, I'll second it.
Take a vote?
Do you want me to do a roll call vote, Chairman?
I don't know if that's necessary.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. All in favor, motion carries five to zero.
Well, I think Russell voted no.
No.
Four to one. No.
Russell voted no.
Oh, I think, I didn't hear him say no, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night, Ira, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board.
Have a great night, good to see you again, have a great night. Okay, next on the agenda is a public, a public hearing for Yeshiva Eitz Chaim slash Skills Building Center. It's the corner of Oretam and Hillside. I make a motion to open the public hearing. Hi. Are we on board with opening the public hearing? Okay.
So you want the public to speak first?
Oh, is that what, I'm sorry.
Might, might I, might I suggest that we have a presentation from the applicant?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Technology wrong. I, okay, you're right, I meant to open the.
Application. Oh, it's, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can have, we can have a presentation.
Yes, 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 that's what I wanted to do, right.
From the applicant, and then maybe we can discuss maybe some of the board's comments, and then you can open it up for public comment, and I believe you were going to have public comment tonight for three minutes per. Person.
Right, we'll, we'll get to that, I'm sorry, I just read it off the paper. I meant to open the application, and we will have a public hearing for this application. Okay, so thank you for that.
So who's the applicant representative?
Yeah.
Hello, hello, my name is Joseph Chergan, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Yeshiva Eitz Chaim. The Skills Building Center, and I have with me Tom Scrabble, the, the engineer for the application, I'll just, I'll be brief, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Tom for any technical issues. So we're seeking site plan approval for an elementary school at 99 Oretam Road. And also 98 and 100 Hillside Avenue. Essentially, we're seeking to merge the three lots so that we can build a school for 100. Boys and girls, grades K through eight. The building is 11,000 square feet because we do anticipate future growth. To between 200 and 240 students, and so we're planning for that, and that's what we're asking to build now. There's two buildings there currently. The one on Hillside is going to be demolished to allow for the creation of the school building. The other large structure that there is a house, northernly portion of the property, and that's going to remain as a caretaker's residence. We're proposing 37 parking spaces, which we believe are sufficient for this use. And we also have adequate space for the three buses that we anticipate will be on site at any one time. We spent a good deal of time with the village's professionals, both onsite and at CDRC, and I, I thank them for their attention to this, and. Between them and us, I, I think we've come upon a, an application that. It can serve the needs of the community and will be appropriate for the area. We understand that the village planner and the building inspector believes there's a need for a variance with respect to lot width. And therefore, this is an existing condition, but in, in abundance of caution, we, we were going to ask to go to the ZBA so that we can. We can get that variance, you're not going to see that on our application, something that came out now in, in the process. So I will turn it over to Mr. Scrabble, but I, I just want to conclude by emphasizing. That this type of use, a religious educational use, is one that's favored under New York State and federal law. Especially when it's in a residential area, which is where we're proposing to do it. And as such, it's entitled to special consideration by planning and zoning boards in, in this state. So if there's any questions, I turn it over to Mr. Scrabble and let, let him show you the project.
Okay.
Tom, I shared my screen, if you want to pull up the plans. It's up to you.
I, there's actually two Tom Scrables in this meeting, can you, you want me to share? Are you sharing, or would you like me to?
No, you share, you share.
Can you let the other Tom Scrabble share?
I just, I did multiple, whoever wants to share can go in. It's not one person. Okay.
All right, just let me expand this. Okay. This is sheet one of our site plans, and good evening, everybody, my name is Tom Scrabble, I'm the engineer for the applicant. Mr. Chergan mentioned most of the, the basics as far as the application, it's an 11,000 square foot school. 37 parking spaces, egress and egress all off of Hillside Avenue. There's an existing building in the back where I'm kind of circling my cursor, that will be the caretaker's residence. There are several outbuildings on the property. Most of which will be removed, we're keeping a couple, there's one at the top of the drawing again, where I'm circling my cursor, where the existing well. Is, is located. The pool area we're trying to maintain, but not any of the buildings in that area. There's a shed, there's a pool house, there are kennels, all of those will be removed. There's one other outbuilding. To remain. And, and that will be essentially for some storage for the site. The real thrust of the application obviously is the school and the driveway and the parking. We went through several CDRC meetings. Lots of feedback, which was really very helpful. We ended up with a. No, no right turn out of the development. That was important to our neighbors in New Jersey, as well as I think the, the village's CDRC members. So we, we narrowed down the entrance so that you're basically making right turns in and only left turns out. We widened the driveway. To 26 feet to satisfy the, the fire department. There was a lot of back and forth on the water service to this development. There is no water main in the vicinity, I think the nearest one is. 4,000 or so feet away, better part of a mile away. Right now, the plan calls for a 30,000 gallon tank in the basement of the building. That actually has changed based on meetings with the, the fire department. So that, you'll see that in the next iteration of the plans. We, we submitted several sheets, grading, utility. We also realized that there is more to be done. We do have a lighting plan now, but we didn't have one at the time of submission for this meeting. So there'd be a lighting plan, a landscaping plan. We understand that we'll need a full sweep for this project. Solar, road, incentive control, things like that. But we wanted to get to the point where it was refined enough that the board could look at it. I think CDRC felt the same. And at this point, we were hoping to take any questions from the board and hopefully then go to ZBA at their next meeting. The variance that we're talking about is the frontage on Hillside Avenue. I think 300 is required, and we're at about. 250. That's an existing condition. You know, one that the, the applicant really has no control over, there are developed plots on either side of us. So the width of, the slight deficiency in that width is really something that we cannot control, and it. Does not impact the development or our concept at all. You know, as you can see, the lot gets significantly wider once you get beyond that, that first lot to our west on Hillside. So where we're actually putting the building, we're probably closer to 400 feet wide, I don't have that exact number. But we exceed the, the 300 foot requirement. But technically, we need a variance because the width at the setback line along Hillside is, is slightly deficient. And with that. I don't mean to be too brief, but I think it's more important to get to your questions.
Thanks. Are all the buildings that are planned and being? Sorry, I was muting and unmuting, are all the buildings that you plan to remove, are they all noted on the plan?
They are, there, there's a question about the number of accessory buildings allowed. And I think we're allowed three in total, and whether or not the caretaker's residence is included in that, I'm not 100% sure. So ultimately, this is what we would like to keep. It's our new proposed building, the caretaker's residence, and then these two outbuildings, one at the extreme north end of the site, and one. Kind of at the northwest or northeast corner of our proposed building. Everything else would be removed, including something I should have mentioned earlier, the existing house. And some accessory structures associated with that, which front now on Hillside.
Okay, and, and the buildings even tend to keep, what condition are they in?
Um, you know, things are fairly old, but they've been kept. The two that we want to keep are in good condition. I think they're structurally sound, they're aesthetically fine. And the one is important because the well is housed in there. The plan does call for, I think on one of the notes, a new well, because that's what we thought we were doing at one point. We're actually going to keep the existing well because that is sufficient, we have yield tests. And the existing well can service the, you know, the daily water service for the buildings. And it will not be used at all for the fire service, which, as I said earlier, we'll detail more at the, the next meeting.
That's the tank in the basement we talked about before.
Yeah, which we're not doing anymore, the fire department was willing to allow us to use the pool as kind of our secondary source, which is 40,000 gallons of water. And we agreed to fully sprinkle the building, including the eaves on the outside.
Okay, and the water for the sprinkler system will also come from the well?
Well, no, it comes from the pool, which will be backed up with, you know, tanker trucks as needed. The pool, the, the existing well will only be used literally for evaporation, if, if, you know, the pool goes down, we can, we can fill it up. There's not a high yield on the well, but it's enough for the residents and the school, and that's what we use it for solely.
Okay.
Did, did you say the pool was your secondary source, what's your primary source for fire?
Well, that, yeah, I'm sorry, that, yeah, that was not a great way to say it, the, the pool is our, is our reservoir for fire protection. 40,000 gallons of water is our reservoir for, for fire protection, and quite honestly, I was not. At the most recent meeting with the fire department, they detailed some of those things in their review letter, and. I think it's clear that they were satisfied with the outcome, but I, I don't want to testify too much to the details because I, I didn't hear any of it firsthand, I'm sorry.
What would happen, I guess, not that it's a problem too often, but what if during the winter, the pool surface freezes over, and is that going to impact the ability to draw water? Are you feeding it from the bottom, like, how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sure that was discussed, and, and that's kind of why I said I don't want to. Get too much into the nitty gritty, I will have that information for your next meeting. get too much into the nitty gritty. Um, I will have that information for your next meeting.
I can actually answer that. Um, chemically, I believe we're gonna be able to keep it from freezing without um, you know, would safely, chemically.
You mean like saltwater or even something else?
Something like that, yes. That was discussed with the fire department. I don't know the exact, you know, chemical we're talking about. That will give you, but the the issue of it freezing was addressed.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there any can safety concerns about that pool? You're gonna have a hundred kids in the school looking at a pool with water.
But it it'll be fenced.
I can jump.
Mr. Finley, when we open the public hearing, that's when you'll be called on. And Abner, you're part of the um applicant, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of points. Hi, my name's Alba Barnett, everybody. I'm with the school. Um, first of all, um, you know, regarding, uh, Mr. Cornelius, regarding the the uh uh, pool, it's it's actually currently, um, there's an eight foot twelve fence um around the entire pool. Um, so it's, you know, quite secure. Um, and I just also wanted to clarify because I was at the meeting. Um, first of all, the, right, so it is, um, Mr. Hawk, as you had kind of alluded to. Um, we have a twelve and a half thousand gallon tank. That's the primary um, uh, per, you know, uh, service for the sprinkler system. The pool is just the backup. Um, obviously, there are different ways to make sure it doesn't freeze in the winter, um, which will provide those details in the next submission. Um, but that's the idea. The idea is that it would be um available and maintained as an extra reservoir, especially given you know, the distance from the nearest hydrant. Um, and there were also a couple other things actually that the fire department asked for. One of them was in the letter that we got in response to this meeting. Um, which we will be including in our next submission.
Is this a year round school or certain months it's closed? How does this work? Just out of curiosity.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's closed, you know, in the summertime and at Jewish holidays.
And it's only a school and not gonna have any events there or anything like that?
It's only a school. It's not, I I don't know what ki- kind of events you're getting at.
I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out exactly, you know, what's gonna go on in the school during the year.
Well, could there be any like summer camp activities or anything like that?
We haven't planned that. It doesn't occur now. Um, it's a beautiful campus, you know, could be, but it's not, uh, not something that we're contemplating.
Does the school currently exist elsewhere or is this gonna be a second? I guess, location or camp?
No, the the school currently is two rented locations, um, both in um, um elsewhere in in uh, in Ramapo.
So we want to hear from our consultants?
Yes, no more questions from the board? Okay, yes. I think we should hear from our consultants. Um, let's go to Valerie, if she has anything to say, which I think she does.
Yes, um, so thank you. Um, I just wanted to highlight a few things. Basically, um my memo, uh, my memo basically summarizes some of the outstanding items that we need in order to undertake technical review of this particular application. While the application, you know, as, as the applicant has noted, you know, this requires a special use permit. So it is a use that is allowed underneath the zoning district. It's really that there are a lot of details that we need to have the applicant submit in order to really be able to do a technical review of the of the site, um, especially in terms of a number of the items dealing with like trash enclosures, your recreational facilities. Um, lighting pathways, sidewalks. Um, we also noted that like graded grading drainage utilities plan, landscape landscaping and lighting plan. Also, um, profile and detail plans, as well as a stormwater management and pollution prevention plan are all needed to be submitted in order to really be able to do a technical review of this application. In addition, I think, um, I raised a couple concerns that the board might want to consider, which is you know, potentially asking the applicant to do a a traffic analysis specifically dealing with the ingress and egress of the site, making sure those uh, correct site distances, as well as um just highlighting that right now, this particular application only has one means of ingress and egress for all the children. And a lot of times, uh, this board per- prefers to have more than one um, ingress and egress. Um, also, just uh, one last thing is just noting on the, while you are not the architectural review board, ultimately um, you will have to consider the design, the facades, as well as the overall dimensions of the buildings. And so additional information on the buildings themselves, including elevations and maybe some interior information would also be helpful for this particular project. Um, in terms of next steps for this board, since the applicant did note that they do have to go to the zoning board of appeals. Um, one of the things that we can do is start moving forward on the seeker process. This would be a coordinated review. It is an unlisted action under seeker. So tonight, this board could um, ask for a notice of, or, um, excuse me, vote on a notice of intent to be lead agency. And then we can then um circulate that notice of intent to the zoning board of appeals and the other um involved agencies to move that process forward. And those are my comments.
Do they have to go in front of the ARB, the RC?
They are, but the ARB um is a recommendation board. So technically, the coordinator review under seeker would be with this, the zoning board would be an involved agency. But ultimately, um, you will be looking at the, you get to look at the, for the planning board as opposed to the actual architectural details. The overall massing of the building and those types of elements are definitely under your purview.
I, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a recommendation that the board consider adopting the notice of intent. To be lead now, lead agency. Well, it's noticeable then to be lead agency uh and have it circulated. Um, so that we don't lose it um as we go on to talk about other things.
Okay, so let's make the motion now. I'll make the motion to um
Declare.
Declare a notice of intent to be lead agency for this project for the uh for seeker.
And to have that circulated uh, consistent with uh, the seeker requirements.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Was that Mordecai?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No.
Okay, so I was taken care of.
Well, Valerie brought up a good point about two exits and entrances. Is that something we should consider?
Well, is that, that's, that's something for the traffic analysis, so.
Well, traffic analysis is how many cars go down the street. But if you look on a plane, you can only get in and out one way. What if there's a problem with that location?
Yeah, I I would agree with that. Typically, we would see some sort of emergency entrance and exit.
Typically, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, I I zoomed in on my drawing. You'll notice that the, I guess that's the most northerly parking lot. Um, we're actually, you know, this is more parking spaces than we need. So we're trying to utilize some of the existing tennis court area as our parking. Um, it would be striped, but it could also be used for recreational purposes for the school. Um, you know, cordoned off obviously, but um would serve a dual purpose. It would be very easy for us to connect that to, you could see the existing roadway that runs out all the way to Oretam Road.
That's still operational? That's still?
It's, yeah, the road is still there. The 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 problem with it potentially is um, it's a private road and and I'm sure the residents who live there would not be really happy with that. But if it was only a secondary means of access and only used in an emergency. I I think that's a pretty easy answer to that question.
Well, do you know if you have the legal right to use it?
Well, the
For the intended purpose.
Yeah, I I don't know that that's defined at all, to be honest with you, but um, you know, we have access to the road. Is that defined? I don't know.
So that's something you can look into and maybe get back to the board, but that seems a plot, like a potential solution. Um, but I would just recommend when you submit your revised plans that all elements that are actually being kept on the site plan be noted and those that are gonna be brought in to like basically this approvals, it would be good instead of them being light gray, actually made part of the overall site plan. So for example, something like the tennis courts, you know, if that's gonna be removed, that will be removed. But if something's gonna stay, that becomes darker so that we can actually see what is being proposed for the entire site.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to piggyback on that statement. Um, the primary uh structure here is gonna be the school, correct?
Yes.
So the secondary would be the, one of the caretaker's buildings, the one that's gonna remain would be an accessory to that. You are only allowed three accessories. So if you're gonna go to the ZBA for a variance, you might want to request a variance if you're gonna save more than two other buildings.
And we we had some discussion about that at at CDRC and I apologize, I'm just still not a hundred percent clear. Is it only the buildings? Because I thought at one point we had a discussion where the pool itself might be considered.
The pool is considered an accessory structure.
So we've got the pool, the caretaker's house. We could literally have one more then.
And you got the well building. That makes three.
Yeah, so if we want to keep this other building.
You're gonna have to get a variance.
Okay. Thank you.
And what about a traffic studies? They think that's required?
Well, Valerie mentioned the traffic study.
Well, it's gonna be getting to be a pretty busy road if there's the road they're using.
So, um, I i- I don't know if it's appropriate for me to speak, but um, on behalf of the applicant. We we don't believe there will be a large increase in the traffic as a result of our use. Um, the the use, if it were today, if it were built today and there were a hundred students, that's, it's, it's usually sixty, fifty to sixty students per bus. So that's a small amount. And if it went, even if it went up to the maximum that we're talking about, it's not a lot.
There are. Just to be clear, what's the maximum that you're talking about? Because I heard a hundred.
So what I, what I said
It says here two hundred to two forty.
What what I said in
But I heard a hundred.
What I said in my presentation and what we put in our narrative is that the school currently has a hundred students. And that's why I said if we were there today, we would be using a hundred students. But we do anticipate growth somewhere between two hundred and two forty. So I think two forty is the number that everybody should be thinking about. And two forty divided by sixty is eight.
Right, so I think in terms of the traffic, it's mostly a concern, at least from my perspective, is the turning radiuses, the site instances, the queuing of the buses, making sure you have the appropriate space on site. You know, because Hillside is a tight road and to happen to have, and I've seen schools where the buses end up having a queue on the roadside because there's not enough site uh, space on site. So it's really just looking at the overall operations of the the buses. And then you also have staff coming in as well at the same time. So that can, you know, cause difficulties on a particular site.
Okay, so what what I'm hearing, if if, and I don't want me to put words in your mouth, is that we're not really concerned so much with the traffic counts. It's more, um, is the site and the surrounding road appropriate for the buses and and the cars that are gonna be there?
I'm, I'm not the boards. The board will ultimately decide, but that's just my, the, from my perspective, that those are my biggest concerns. I don't know if Eve has anything to weigh in on that as well, because she also reviews these types of issues.
Can I just make one real quick comment? This is Tom Scrabble again. Uh, I have the narrative on my screen, just so you can see it. At the CDRC level, we did do a a traffic proposal and we stipulated at that point, and I'm assuming and my client should chime in on this one, but I'm assuming we're still stipulating that we would only have a maximum of three full size and one small bus on site at any given time. So they can stack the buses. So that that will be the case, which I think eliminates that concern over, you know, buses queuing on the roadway. Um, and if we need to massage that language so that it doesn't just say on site at any given time, because the intent was obviously that they would be staggered so that there would be no other buses in the area and it wouldn't be a conflict. So whatever language the board needs, you know, from my perspective and my client can chime in, um, we're willing to do that.
Abner, do you want to say something?
He's muted.
Yeah, I I actually, I I think we we'd have to look at that closely to make sure, but I think we're certainly okay with that. Um, you know, um, we, I get the concern about you definitely don't want a bus queuing on Hillside Avenue. I think you can kind of see common sense wise that we probably have enough, plenty of space within the loop that we created. Um, but I think we, we need to demonstrate that and we will. Um, I I did have a couple other things just going back, um, because a a number of these things had come up in our in our, you know, we were at CDRC probably five or six times over several years. Um, and and uh, you know, w- we got a lot of feedback from the agencies over the last few days. Um, and I I I know, uh, you know, um, Mr. Chergan, Mr. Scrabble are are are, um, you know, kind of responding to your, to your feedback, but it was our understanding uh, Inspector Zumo, that the, 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 uh, pool is not considered a structure. Um, this is something that we had dealt with at CDRC. Um, so I I I'm not, not arguing with you. I just, it's something that I I think we do want to look into further. And similarly, um, you know, on regarding the the frontage, I think our our recent calculations had included um, the frontage for both Oretam and Hillside, and we didn't think that a uh variance was needed. Um, again, it's something that I know this is on the record. I know the public is here, so I just want to say that it's something that we're gonna be looking at very closely, very quickly. Um, but it was our understanding until now, um, from the interactions that we've had, that we did not need a variance for that. Again, I'm not, I just, just for the record, I I just, I want to be very clear.
Lou?
Yes.
Can you respond to that?
Yeah, I could respond to that. Uh, I did send a letter out to Mr. Chergan earlier today. We did look at the plans. Plans uh do show the short frontage, both the entrance and the exit are on the same road. So I don't know how you would count frontage on two different roads anyway. Um, it's there. The school is basically using Hillside. Um, and in, on the plans itself, it shows the deficiency, so uh, I don't ever remember them saying they wouldn't need a variance, but I, it's, I mean, we did have a lot of CDRC meetings. Um, and the pool as our code list is in the accessory structure. So it's, I didn't say it was a building, it's an accessory structure. So we're barns and uh, sheds and uh, even the tennis courts is considered an accessory structure. So that's uh, and just for the record, that's what the code states.
And like, this is Tom Scrabble again. Just to be clear, the, I think the variance is for a lot with.
Yeah.
Correct, that's correct.
You are correct. Yep.
Because the width on Hillside clearly is is deficient. I understand that.
Yep.
Um, and I, and in my experience, you can't measure width in two different spots. You have to measure width in one spot.
Correct.
The frontage that I measured on both streets and that makes the frontage compliant.
Do you agree with that, Lou?
Yeah, I'd I'd have to check the code on frontage. There'd be a question about not only the frontage being measured on two different sides, but the frontage measured on a private road. So I'd have to check on that and see what we pursue, what the answer is on that.
Yeah, I tried to look, it wasn't really well defined, but.
It's not.
Honestly, we're we're going to the Z B A anyway. Yeah, talk to my client, but it's something we should consider asking for.
Right.
Okay, so um, is Eve here?
Yes, she is. Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Hi.
Hi there.
Go ahead.
Uh, I did prepare a brief letter and as Mr. Scrabble has acknowledged and as Valerie has stated there. Uh, a lot of the detail now should continue to be developed. Uh, initially, we were focusing on layout and on specifically the availability of utilities. So I'm glad to see that that plan and that um had made progress. And the issue with the water has been worked out. I just had a couple of questions regarding the existing dwelling to remain, and I think Mr. Scrabble addressed one of those already. So that existing dwelling does have a well and that well has capacity and enough yield for portable water for the building, the accessory home plus the school, as I understand it, is that correct?
Yeah, so we we have those yield tests, which I think we did circulate them at one point, but it's been a while, so.
Okay. All right, so that's great. So you have portable water, you've worked out your issue with firefighting, so that's great. Um, I see there was a septic on the plan, so is the existing dwelling going to remain on septic? Or are they going to connect into the sewer as well?
No, something would be abandoned and everything would be on sewer.
Okay, so that's.
It requires an ejector pump, but but everything will be on sewer.
Okay, so that'll be closed in accordance with the Health Department regulations. And to further discussion on the traffic, I think it is important to have the potential for a secondary emergency egress. Um, but I would, you know, suggest a traffic study, look at that to see if it's feasible to have the bus circulate toward the north and out to Oritam. If in fact, it's permitted to have bus traffic go out on Oritam, because I know that is a private road and it's rather limited in width. Uh, my only other concern was the turning movements on and off of Hillside. So if there was to be a limited traffic involvement, maybe they can look at that as well. Uh, in terms of the bus, um, even if there were three buses or six buses, with that long entry driveway. I don't foresee any problem whatsoever with buses queuing on the road. Um, and then, of course, the applicant can stagger his the arrival and departure hours. But I do ask that the the drop off and pickup area, but the bus staging area be shown on the plan. Uh, that would be helpful for the board to visualize how the site will operate. Um, all the other things I think have been touched upon either by Mr. Scrabble or by Valerie. So I'll keep it short and I look forward to another plan submission. Thank you.
Thanks, Eve.
Yes, thank you. Okay, would you have to like, you want to say anything, Mr. Scrabble? So you've just said, any comments?
I only have one follow up to what Eve just mentioned. The secondary egress onto Oritam, that's and and I think Eve specifically mentioned buses, that's still only for emergencies, correct?
That's that's what I would suggest, yeah, this, I don't think that road could handle any type of regular traffic.
Okay, I just, just to be clear, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any way to exit out of the parking lot with a second driveway onto Hillside?
I mean, we certainly have room. Um, you know, they would be a hundred twenty-five or a hundred fifty feet apart. Um, there's no reason we couldn't do that. Um, a big part of why it's designed the way it is is because my my client was very interested in saving as many of the trees on site as po- as possible. They want a real forested feel to the campus. Um, I think once you add another even if it's only egress off off of Hillside. Um, you know, you you're obviously going to open up the front of the lot significantly more, um, but it's from an engineering standpoint, it's certainly doable. And it comes down to the question of, you know, th- there could always be, let's say we did another leg of the road here.
Right.
You know, what if it's blocked? What if the tree falls down here? You know, then you still don't have, both of these accesses are blocked. You know, the it's an endless question. There's there's always a situation where whatever you design as far as ingress egress in some, under some scenario would not be enough. So it's really going to come down to what the board wants and and thinks is practical and and we can do whatever you want.
And Eve, this would be something that will be brought up in the traffic study?
Well, as Valerie had mentioned, if you define the parameters of the study that the traffic consultant should address, the onsite circulation is certainly one of the aspects that they commonly look into.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, anybody else on the uh board or consultants or applicant, anything else to say before we open it up?
Uh, this is Russ.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of a, I guess it's a dumb question slash observation, but I noticed in this packet of information that there's owner's consent uh, to visit the property. Would would we need to contact you in advance if we wanted to come out and take a look at the property? I don't know, Dan, if that's a question for you, maybe. Are we allowed to just uh go out there?
Uh, I believe the application.
I was just going to say, there's a page of the.
Provides that uh you have that consent, but um.
It does.
I I I think um, uh just as a matter of courtesy, I think there his family lived there. I think as a matter of courtesy that uh, um, you arrange uh you know, don't just show up.
I can coordinate it for you, uh, Russ, if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point. I think I'd be interested in that too, so.
Okay.
I'll speak to you as a.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to open it to a public hearing.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, just before I do that, um, for the public hearing, we're going to limit each comment to three minutes and you can only speak once. Um, please only speak to the topic that we're discussing now, which is the uh, which is the uh, it's Higham School Building Center. And um, just I guess, take into account and recognize that the applicant hasn't submitted his final plans yet, so there may be a lot of details that we don't know yet and he doesn't know yet, so um, if some of the questions get too specific, there might not be answers. And just as a reminder, it's really not um the applicant's responsibility to respond to questions from the audience. But you're welcome to uh make whatever comments regarding the application that you want. So with that, I'd make a motion to open the public hearing for Yeshiva's High School Building Center. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, okay.
The screen is still sharing, I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, you can take the screen sharing down, please, Tom. And if anyone would like uh to uh comment, please raise your hands and I'll call on you. Um, the first one I'm going to call on is Mr. Um, Dan Finley. And you have three minutes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I unmuted him. Is he, Dan?
He might have to unmute himself, I don't see him.
Dan who?
No, Dan Finley.
Oh, don't do that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Okay, alright, so first of all, um.
Can you just state your address for the record, please?
Dan Finley, four Oritam Road, Armont, New York. I am right next to the property owned by Mr. Uh, Reuven here, who is I consider a good friend and a good neighbor. I enjoy having him there. I like his wife Sarah very much. All his children are wonderful. But this, I am thoroughly opposed to this school for a multitude of reasons. One is, we are basically landlocked here on Oritam Road. There's only one way out of here now, where I used to be able to get to Good Samaritan Hospital. I want to cross the Hillside Bridge, I could get there in six minutes. Now, if I have to go out Hillside Avenue with four or five buses and additional cars, because we've got emotionally challenged children here, I imagine there's going to be a lot of employees. It is going to be a nightmare making that left turn onto uh East Saddle River Road and then having to traverse all the way through Route fifty-nine, five traffic lights. We all know what the traffic is. So a six minute ride for an emergency to Good Sam is going to triple in time. I don't, I just don't see how that's even acceptable until we'd uh open up the Hillside Avenue Bridge uh back out to West Saddle River Road. Secondly, right, right off the bat, Oritam Road is not an option, it's an emergency exit. It's a private road. We all own the road privately, we have ownership of the road. It is seventeen feet wide. We can barely get two cars to pass each other on on a good day. Um, in the wintertime, it is a one lane road. If a bus comes there and gets stuck, we are all li- landlocked. Somebody has to go to the hospital, they're dead. Oritam Road is not an option, we all own the road. Road spills into Upper Saddle River, Upper Saddle River is not going to allow school buses down there. So that is not an option as an emergency exit. Third, we have um concerns about, you know, going from a residence of six or eight people to three hundred students, what that's going to, what impact that will have on all of us downstream for our wells. We have three of the wells on Oritam have already had to be drilled deeper over the last fifteen years. Uh, any significant depletion of the water supply up there is going to affect all of us downstream. Um, as far as accessing onto Hillside Avenue, again, I would have concerns if there's a snowy day. A a bus gets stuck on Hillside, can't turn around, we are blocked, there's no other way out of here. So again, whether it's a fire, whether it's an emergency uh stop to the hospital, we have no other options. So.
Mr. Fidley, your three minutes are up, but if I may suggest, you might want to submit some of your comments in writing to me, which I could share with for with the board and the uh consultants for the record going forward. Uh, so we have them.
And and it would, and it would also become part of.
Yes, it would be part of the record and would be attached to the minutes as well.
And that goes for everybody here, you're all.
Yes, for everyone, I, thank you.
Yeah, all your emails will be seen by all of us and be part of the public.
Just in the interest of time, thank you.
Can I make one more comment?
It's up to the chairperson.
Okay.
If you can make it quickly.
Okay, yeah, my, I guess my other concern is with with that many students there, um, I would imagine there's going to be a lot of people. Um, you know, keeping an eye on the students. We have, all have concerns that, you know, liability issues. I own a lake here on the property. If one of the students comes down here, falls into my lake, what is my liability? I I would require some sort of fencing. I would have grave concerns that if um a student came down, came onto my property, fell into my pond. It's um, it creates a dangerous situation here.
Okay, it's noted in the record, thank you. Um, Danielle Meehan, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, whoop, sorry. Hi, Danielle Meehan, eighteen Ackerman Avenue. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of Coupon Armont, um Coupon Armont, um although understands the need of um, a school for children, children are our most um important thing for families and our future. Um, I don't think this is an appropriate, we do not feel it's an appropriate place due to um the limited um traffic situation there. Um, there is also going to be a cemetery um, which uh the buses will have to pass. Um, and there's no way to, you know, schools have a uh schedule, cemeteries don't. Um, and um, that could perhaps really um hold up school buses going in and out. Um, I actually, for the, I think the administrator of the school is on, is that correct? I had a couple of questions if I could ask him, is that possible?
Uh, no.
Just to reiterate.
Danielle.
No, I can't.
Uh, I'm not saying you can't ask the question, I'm I'm merely talking about process.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, Dan. Okay, my apologies, okay. So, okay, I have.
Hold on, let me, let me just.
Yes, start.
Elucidate on that. Um, the process is you ask the question of the chairman and then the chairman could ask uh, or ask for a response on your behalf. But ask through the chairman.
Got it.
So address it.
Got it. So Mr.
I think it's part of Robert's rules.
Yes, okay, Mr. Friedland, Chairman Friedland. Um, it's my understanding this is a school for special needs and general ed, is that correct?
So that's what I understand. Um, again, the applicant is not required to respond, but I go, we'll give them an opportunity to respond. In general, I would like the applicant just to keep note of all the questions that are asked and maybe respond to all of them at the end. But um, I'll let him answer this one, I just, as long as there's no back and forth, because then I think that'll uh deter us a little bit. So, Mr. Burnett, if you want to answer this particular question, is it a special ed?
It's about that ten, ten percent uh special and about ninety percent regular ed, that's the break down.
Um, okay, one of the re, thank you for answering that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, the, one of the reasons I was asking is I don't know what kind of special needs these children are, but uh particularly in this, they're New York State residents, um, many um children with special needs do uh go to school year round. Um, so um, that I think is a concern. Um, if that's a possibility, and I don't know, you know, again, and and you um, for um uh, many issues should not probably answer as to what type of of uh needs these children have or could possibly have. But I think that's something that needs to be considered if that is a possibility for um the, in the best interest of these children's educational needs, that they'd have to go um, um, full year. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please raise your hand if you have a comment.
I.
Okay, Mr. Bernard.
No, I don't, I don't know the protocol. I I just want to respond to to Ms. Meehan's last comment. This is, there's no, there is no, this is not a twelve month a year school. The school has existed for for more than ten years and and the staff needs their summer vacation, so.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, Heather Federico.
Hi, everybody. Um, this is Heather Federico, thirty Tartan Road in Mawa. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, there was some discussion about four-year-olds possibly going to the school and four-year-olds are not allowed to take buses. And I was just wondering what impact that will have on the traffic. Or will there be preschool students attending the school and will they be dropped off individually? Um.
Okay, thank you, so.
Another question, I I unless you're going to answer it, was someone going to answer?
Oh, I think, alright, I muted myself again. Yeah, do you want to answer that, Mr. Chergan?
It's K through eight.
Okay, there was um at more than one C D R C, there was discussion of four-year-olds possibly attending. So I don't know if four-year-olds are.
K through eight.
So I think, I think the chairman is asking that um, that the applicant just hold off on their response. And the app, and the chairman will let you know when he's looking for a response for a particular question.
Yes, if the applicant doesn't.
And the alternative. And the alternative, and the alternative, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The if they make it through the zoning board, they have to come back before the planning board for a continuation of a public hearing. So, perhaps the applicant can take note of the questions that have been raised and respond in writing for whenever they might be back before the planning board, assuming they get through the zoning board.
I, I also have a general question. This will be the third non-residential approved site on Hillside Avenue. Does that require a zoning change? You are an RR fifty, which is a rural residential fifty zone, and now you have a cemetery, a mikva, and potentially a skill-building school. Is that going to require a zoning change in, in the town of Ramapo and Armont?
Okay, thank you for your question. I guess that'll come in front of the zoning board. So, if the applicant would like to answer that question at the end, we'll, we'll certainly give them an opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, just to move everything along.
There's anyone else? Please raise your hand. I don't see any other hands raised, Chairman.
Okay, let's give him a few seconds.
I just want to speak. I'm, you know, I'm the new person there in the road there next to them.
Can you give us your name and address, please, for the record?
To Oretam Road.
To Oretam Road. Thank you.
I don't see no problem with this having the school there. I don't see really no problem. So, that's what I want to say.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. Fine, if that's it from the, from the public, if the applicant would like to respond to any of the issues, concerns, questions that were brought up, you certainly don't have to, but you can take a minute or two.
Well, the, the question of the preschool, it, there's no plans for preschool. The application in writing in our narrative says K through eight. That's what we're going to have there. Whether her, the, the lady's other question had to do with if there needs to be a zone change by, she asked Ramapo, or which wouldn't have anything to do with it, or Armont. It's not really a question for me to answer, but I don't think that a zone change is necessary. I think that's really a question for, you know, the municipality, but I don't think a zone change is necessary.
Aren't you applying for a conditional use or special use permit? I think we're going to have to. Under the code? Yeah. Lou, you want to respond to that? Isn't it part of the application that they're making?
Yes, it is, and they're applying for it.
And it means it's built into the code?
Correct. It's, it's, the, all the applications she just, she's discussing on Hillside Avenue are, are in the code. There has been no required zone change to put in the cemetery or the school. It's a special permit application. And the mikva building is not even in Armont, it's in Ramapo. So, I can't comment on that.
Thank you.
For some of the board members that might not be aware, one side of Hillside is Armont. The other side is the town of Ramapo, and further down is Upper Saddle River.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, there's nobody else? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
No, you don't.
No, you don't want to.
Sorry. End the public comments.
No. It's, it's a well, even before you get to that. Well.
Are we done with the public comment?
No.
I don't have anyone else that's raised their hand at this time.
It, it would be, my recommendation would be, you're going to need two actions, to consider two actions, right? Number one, to consider continuing the public hearing. Number two, to refer them to the zoning board to acquire variances that we know about, and variances we may not know about, but should know about before they go to the zoning board. If you're going to continue the public hearing, because they have to go to the zoning board, you'd have to continue it to a date and time uncertain, which would require
We notice.
A renotice, renoticing public hearing, correct?
And you understand that, right? Yeah, I'm talking to the applicant, so.
Well, well, Suzanne was good enough to give me the dates and times of the next zoning board meetings. The, the next one is November ninth, I think, and there's no way we could make that. It's December seventh is the date that we would be on. So, I would prefer that you, you adjourn us to a date after December seventh, if you're able to. And I don't want to presume we're going to be done in one meeting, but I, I'm hopeful we would, and we would ask to adjourn if.
Can we do that? Can we, can we adjourn them to the planning board meeting at the end of December? And if they're not done with the zoning board?
Yes, yes, you could. And if they're not ready for that meeting, that could either be continued to, like, the first application tonight.
Right, the gas station.
Required that, required that. It could be continued to another date and time.
Or, or.
It could be continued to a date uncertain, in which case that one would have to be renoticed. So, I have no objection.
We can also, at the December meeting, continue some of the seeker discussion.
Even if they don't have their ZBA.
That's correct. So, if for some reason they do have their traffic analysis in place, and we can also, I can also provide the board a part two, to discuss the impacts of seeker, so you can continue the seeker discussion associated with this.
I agree with that.
So, just going back to my previous mistake, I don't have to, we don't have to do anything to close.
No, you can't close the bubble. Can't close, because there's going to be more, as the plan develops, there's going to be more to discuss.
But I was talking to the public, sort of the public discussion part of the next meeting.
So, what's, what would be required is a motion to continue the public hearing with regard to skill-building, or however it's entitled, to December.
Yeah, what's the date there?
Well, that, that's, that's what I was trying to say before you'd make the motion.
Go ahead.
Joe, the dates that I gave, gave Mariana were zoning board dates.
I, I know, I.
I just want to make sure that was clear. Okay. One of the items that we needed to discuss this evening with the board is the December meeting date. That was not finalized, which we'll, we'll have to do now in order for the motion to be made to the appropriate meeting.
Can we just say the December meeting, or we have to give an extra?
No, I think you have to give a date certain, according to the law, correct, Dan?
Date and time.
Or else it's not certain.
So, the question is for everyone.
And method, in most cases.
Is December twenty-third, which is the evening before Christmas Eve, for those that, that celebrate that. Is that going to pose a problem for anyone? That is the question. If it's not, I know all the consultants were available. I just wanted to double check.
It's fine with me, and I think we should keep it at seven o'clock.
Okay, so then we'll keep it for December twenty-third, seven o'clock via Zoom. Now you can make the motion.
And again, what day of the week is that?
It is on, it is on our Thursday.
That's a Thursday, yes. Let's keep it at seven PM, and we're still on Zoom in two months?
Yes.
Is that for sure?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's definitely through January.
Yes.
Or till January.
January, correct.
Okay. Okay. So, before I make the motion, I just want to, I just want to make sure between the consultants and the applicant, that the applicant knows exactly what, what we're asking for here. So, the traffic study is something that, that we're asking for. So, make sure when they come back.
Tom Scrable, the applicant's engineer, has a question.
Go ahead, sure.
I just wanted to make it clear, I'm not here December twenty-third. That doesn't mean you can't proceed. I think you could proceed with the traffic, or some other aspect of the application. And I can have, you know, updated plans submitted, but I will not be available that night.
Okay, if the applicants want to go forward with that, that's fine.
I still think, I still think we want the date. If we, if we are able to get the variance on the December seventh, then we'll, we'll, we'll do it. If not, we'll adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no objection to that.
Okay, so I make a motion to continue the public hearing, to adjourn the public hearing, and continue.
December twenty-third.
Thursday, December twenty-third, seven PM via Zoom.
By Zoom. Okay.
Second, please?
I'll second. Or Monica, I take your pick.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need another motion, Chairman.
Okay, I'll make a motion to refer the application for Ishiva茨海姆 Skill Building Center to the Zoning Board Association of. I'm sorry. The Zoning Board of Appeals, Village of Armont. Thank you for that.
That's okay.
Am I referring to a specific date? I'm not, right?
No, no, you just, we request the referral. I need a second, and an all-in-favor, please.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
We will see you for zoning, Joe, and I'll be in touch, and we'll see you in December.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your attention tonight. I appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay. And Eve, the next application Mr. Fusco is on for, for the record.
Okay, thank you very much, guys. Good night.
Okay, good night, Eve. Thank you for everything.
Night, Eve.
Hey, the next application, the final application for tonight is Suez Water, New York PFAS compliance. Okay, who's the, who's representing the applicant here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Adam Weckstein, a partner in the law firm of Hockerman Tortorella and Weckstein, which is at one North Broadway, explains. With me are the engineers on the project, Orion Abline, and William Sherman from Suburban Consulting Engineering, and representative of client, Maria Stepanova. We're here on the property that's designated as two thirty-nine Route fifty-nine, even though it is actually landlocked and takes access off a different road by a drive. We're here because Suez is a public utility, is now faced with different Department of Health regulations, and needs a different treatment methodology to take care of PFAS, which is a compound that is found in water. And if you ask me to pronounce anything other than the acronym, I'd be in trouble. Maybe the engineer can do that. I'm sure she can. So, what will be involved will be some revision of improvements on the site, including a new building involved in the treatment, some associated infrastructure, and some improvements to the drive. I will say that it is our hope that when you, when this hearing, when this hearing session is done, you'll be in a position to close the hearing, and at least grant us an approval conditioned on a number of the outside approvals that we may need.
Don't you need variances, Adam?
We do. We do need.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Oh, you do not grant approvals conditioned on granting a variance?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, it's legally possible, but if that's your practice, I do understand.
Yeah.
So, let me put on.
I mean, did you, you, you heard the prior application, correct?
I did. I mean, this. I did.
Sure, they would have liked that, too.
I don't know that they were as far along as we were. We've already appeared before.
Adam, you don't remember me? I know I'm not dressed the way I usually am, but, and it's been a while, but.
You look very familiar.
Thank you. Well. Hard to tell the way.
Let me have Erin speak to the board. She's the engineer, and will be in a better position to give you some of the details and answer any of the substantive questions that may have.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Erin Abline, I'm with Suburban Engineering. We're located at ninety-six Route two oh six in Flanders, New Jersey. That's our headquarters. Can everyone see the screen I shared?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Great. So, I might be a little repetitive here for some of the things Adam said, but I think they're important. Suez Water New York occupies a subject site that's located, you could see shaded in red here, at two thirty-nine Route fifty-nine, though it has no frontage on Route fifty-nine. The site is operated for the purpose of operate, for a public drinking water facility. This drinking water facility includes a single groundwater well and water treatment facilities that exist already. This is just one facility of many, as part of Suez's Water Distribution Network for the region. This facility is referred to as Well Twenty-Six, and is a critical production facility that operates year-round. So, recently, Suez undertook water quality sampling that specifically targeted these new emerging contaminants, or these emerging contaminants, known as PFAS. I also would prefer not to try to pronounce the very long name of them, but PFAS is what we refer to them as. This was mandated by the New York State Department of Health, which was in compliance with the Environmental Protection, Protection Agency, so EPA regulations. The results from this well, and a few of Suez's wells, revealed that there's detectable levels of this compound above these recently adopted standards. So, following this exceedance, in compliance with the New York State Department of Health, Suez needs to provide safe and reliable drinking water to their customer base. So, Suez has to propose the installation of new treatment processes at any well facilities, including this one, that triggered above these contaminant levels. Suez is proposing to do this.
Are you under a consent decree?
We are under a deferral agreement.
Okay.
Yeah. Suez is proposing the installation of this new treatment process utilizing granulated active, activated carbon filtration for this PFAS removal. This proposed installation of the additional treatment specifically targets this emerging contaminant, and it's required by, like I said, Department of Health, and it's required to be implemented by August of twenty twenty-two. So, we don't have too long here to get this up and running, which is, I know, one of the reasons we're, we're going to talk to you about what we're trying to achieve here, and I know you're saying with the conditions, we, we will need to discuss this with you. As you see here, this property is completely landlocked, so it's located behind the Ramapo Town Hall and Police Department. The property is accessed, I'm going to trace it here with the hand, via access easement through Lot fifty-four, the Town Hall, from South Devon Ave. The property is located within the NS Neighborhood Shopping Zone District, for which public utility buildings are permitted. I'm going to go to the existing condition sheet. This is what we submitted, the same plan set as submitted. As indicated on this sheet, the existing site contains two structures that are already situated on the property. We have one here and one here. The first structure contains a well, chemical storage, some piping. The second structure contains treatment facilities that water passes through prior to being discharged to the distribution system. As I stated, these existing structures are critical, they're necessary, and they are proposed to remain. Further, they have to remain active during the proposed project. So, again, something Suez is required to do, continue to provide water while achieving their treatment goals. Beyond the access driveway, beyond the buildings, you have an access driveway pavement that allows access to the site. We have two trees that are being removed, pretty minor trees. And then for the majority, the area has a six-foot-high fence that surrounds. So, this is all just lawn area outside of the asphalt, six-foot-high fence, and then it's all wetlands. Or there's a unnamed tributary to the Montebello Creek that runs through the site. Further, the existing site contains orange and Rockland high-voltage overhead wires. And there's a substantial easement that really covers most of the site. So, we're dealing with quite a, quite a lot of existing conditions that don't allow us much flexibility in what we're trying to do here. So, I'm going to move to the site plan. And I know I'm zoomed in, if anyone needs me to zoom differently, please let me know. So, as I stated, to provide this necessary PFAS treatment, a duplex GAC granulator, granular activated carbon filtration system will be used. These GAC filtration vessels. I'm sorry, I don't, did someone have a question?
I don't know, I'm muting.
Okay, thank you. These GAC filtration vessels will be installed inside a new building, so they have to go inside a building that will be adjacent to the existing structures, so keep in mind, this was the existing well house, this is the existing treatment building, this is where we're proposing the new treatment building. The proposed building is a little over 1,000 square feet, at 1,013 square feet. We are anticipating it being constructed from split face block and the building will be 30 feet tall. The project improvements are centrally located to minimize the environmental impacts, I spoke about the wetlands, we have the floodplain from the tributary and to obviously let it fill on the site because of that. The total limited disturbance of the project is .10 acres, so we're pretty minor here. The proposed project has no impact on the number of employees and vehicular traffic to and from the site. A single employee will visit the site daily to perform maintenance and check residual levels, that's what happens today, that's going to continue to happen. So the proposed project requires a single variance, unfortunately, this variance was identified pretty late in the game. After our CDRC meetings, it was actually right before we were going to appear in front of you for the first time that we, we identified it. So the required distance between buildings based on Article 6, Section 210-42 is 15 feet. I spoke a lot about the constraints that we have on the site, we can't go closer to the overhead wires, we cannot fill or go closer, so towards the wetlands or the creek, we, we really don't have options here. So our proposed building is located within that 15 feet to the existing buildings. So the minimum dimension we have is 4.63 feet between the wellhouse and the new building.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Do you comply with the High Voltage Proximity Act?
We do.
You check that with ONR?
Yeah, we're, we have some ongoing discussions with ONR in regards to the, the easement. But yeah, the existed, the design was in accordance with the, the act.
Okay.
Okay, and we do have existing facilities that are, that are closer.
Yeah, because I, I could tell you horror stories of.
Oh, yeah, we don't need to do that right now.
Yeah, no.
My August timeframe is enough, yeah, no, it's true, yes, thank you for bringing that up, we did.
No problem.
So this relief is requested really to avoid the negative impacts I talked about, surrounding wetlands, the floodplain, and the proposed use of the site really doesn't change from the existing use. So, as I outlined today, the water system improvements for Well 26 are required. They're required by the New York State Department of Health to provide safe and reliable drinking water to the Suez Water New York customer base. Through investigations of the site, surrounding area, other facilities, the location of the proposed building is situated and needs to be here to allow for the proper connection to the existing well treatment building as well as, like I said, to minimize the environmental impacts of the site. So that's what I have for my presentation today, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just have a few. So as I understand it, the law requires that you have this treatment facility here along with the other distribution mechanism that you have, and if not, then whatever you have there is of no use, is no good, right?
Correct.
This is necessary. And does that mean we're drinking this PFAS stuff now?
So, yeah, Maria, I know Maria, we have Maria from Suez on here as well, but I will answer, and if you feel the need to jump in, Maria, feel free.
Yes, so let me just, let me just give a little bit of a background, PFAS, as Erin mentioned, is emerging contaminant, it's not brand new, but they stayed, stayed slowly, one by one, accepting regulations and New York is now probably competing with California for the lowest standard. We have lowest, one of the lowest standards in the nation. Our compliance level in New York is 10, EPA current compliance level, or not, not compliance, they have health guidance of 70, so that's pretty low to begin with and just by adopting regulation, you know, they give you two, New York gives you two years to comply with it. So if you ask if you're drinking PFAS, a yes, probably as everybody else in the nation. If you want to know if it's high, no, it's definitely below EPA levels and slightly above New York compliance levels. In fact, if you went to New Jersey, you would probably be in much better position because in New Jersey, the compliance levels are 14 and 13, but it's, each state adopts their own regulations. And so we are working to provide cleaning, you know, cleanup to the, to this water, meaning that essentially the treatment facilities are going to be like your British filter, but of an industrial size. There's going to be a carbon removing all the organic contaminants to the clean water sta, standards, it just, you know, due to the amount of water being treated, they need to be of that size. In fact, building height is dictated by the size of the vessels where this granular activated carbon is located. And.
That's basically a filter.
It's, it's a hu, huge giant filter, correct.
Is there machinery involved, or the water just?
There is going to be no additional well capacity, the pumps are going to be upgraded just so you can push water more efficiently through the filter, but nothing, nothing else is going to change, I mean, you need the, maybe slightly upgraded electric, but nothing, nothing crazy. There's no going to be any difference, you're just adding filter to the process.
Is that going to be any odors or anything like that?
No, there's not going to be odors, it's all containerized, it's all within, the PFAS themselves are no odorless. The GAC is going to be within the filters, completely contained. In fact, that's the whole point of them being contained, so there's no bacteria or anything else coming from the outside and potential contaminated in the media. If you are interested about PFAS in your day-to-day life, I can tell you that there are a number of regularly used things that are probably higher sources, but I don't want to allude to it now, we are here for the water treatment and that's what we are trying to accomplish, but yeah.
Is it going? Is there.
Is there going to be any machinery, like loud noise coming out of that?
The pumps are already in place, they, they're well pumps, it's not going to be any louder than it is now. Plus, it's going to be within the building, so all any potential noise, which, which is, it's not really going to be because it's underground and it's going to be contained within the building.
Yes, the building has a few, has louvers and fans, again, very similar to what exists today. So there's no increase in noise at the site.
Correct.
You're welcome.
I would say if you are at the perimeter of the site, you will not hear any difference in the noise, and if you're stepping that out, you know, definitely not.
Thank you.
How tall are the existing structures? This one's going to be 30 feet high, right?
Yeah, so we have, yeah, we have existence structure that is close in height to that.
Right, so as part of this building here that I'm circling, there is an air stripper, that's one of the pieces of treatment that's used and it's a similar height.
Correct.
Okay, well, thank you. So. Turn to our consultants. If they have any comments. Valerie?
Yeah, so I think the applicant has provided a lot of information. This is, while it's a, you know, it's an important project and it's a complex, you know, system. The building itself is quite small, the site is already basically prepared for and it has these kind of existing uses. So really, a lot of the, a lot of my comments deal with the actual permitting of the various agencies, especially the easement issue. There was just a couple of questions about trying to provide a little bit more documentation, dealing with the noise requirements of the zoning chapter. We just noted that lighting will meet, will meet the specifications, tree removal, landscaping, that the applicant's not proposing to provide any additional landscaping, we just highlighted some of the construction aspects of it, but I don't anticipate it being a heavy heavy construction period. And then also just in terms of the wetland area, then the floodplains, I mean, the applicant has provided those studies. The engineer will deal, will pine on the floodplain issue. With the wetland issue, the only thing we note is that there is supposed to be a one parking spot, but that's not, it's not clear whether it's going to be paved or not, and that would just be my only concern since it is in a wetland issue that you try to have some sort of, if there isn't paving because of the dripping of potential contaminants. But other than that, the applicant has provided everything that we need in terms of review and I think if there once this particular application is able to go through approvals, clearly approvals will be contingent upon all the other permitting from the various state and county agencies.
Is there any seeker involved?
No, this is a type 2 action, it's a, it's a small addition to the overall non-residential aspects of this project.
So for the one parking spot, you would prefer?
So my, my note is, well, right now, it just says it's unstripped and it doesn't really define the materials, and so the only concern is it actually is in the wetlands like buffer area, so.
Valerie, can I, yeah, can I respond to that? I'm sorry, so I understand, yeah, the plan is, the way the plan is shown here is a little misleading. This line I'm going to trace, that's an existing asphalt pavement line.
Okay, so there you go, thank you.
Yeah, this is the area that we're going to reconstruct, if you would, as part of the project, this will be allowed to remain. So if I just go back a sheet, you could see that this is where that one's location is shown.
Oh, so the parking spot is already there?
It's, it's already, yes, it's already there, it's unstripped, correct, correct, it's there, they use this space now. But the way that our plan shows the reconstructed asphalt, I see why that is confusing, but it's already asphalt.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification.
And if I may respond, there is not going to be any drippings of contaminants because the contaminants that we're dealing with, it's parts per trillion. I don't know if it's hard to imagine, but the drop in the Olympic sized pool.
Automobile, not necessarily.
Okay, okay, I was going to say like, yes, okay.
No, I know there won't be any of that, don't worry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, and who's our, who's the?
Mr. Al Fusco is on, the engineer.
Okay, Mr. Fusco?
Members, I reviewed this a couple of different times and I have to say that the applicant's engineers have been forthcoming and doing their job in relationship to answering my questions. As Valerie said, there are some open issues with some of the regulatory agencies. Not to be so repetitive, but you know, Orange and Rockland, they're waiting for some Army Corps of Engineer comments. County Ramapo and the Rockland County Sewer both want some sewer analysis. As do, if any is necessary, and if it is, you know, how many units it's going to be and payment of same. That needs to be addressed probably sooner than later. You mentioned the variance already, in relationship to the floodplain, we had determined through our ordinance it's required to be an elevation of three feet above grade, that needs to be shown. Basically, the other thing I added was to just have the erosion control and sedimentation plan noted that is completed before any construction. I've designed many water plants myself and the granulated activated carbon is absolutely the way to go as a tertiary type treatment and you know, once these items are taken care of by the other regulatory agencies and the variance given, I have no issue with any part of it.
Chairman, you muted.
Sorry, I've been talking for 30 seconds, sorry. Okay. Yeah, does the applicant have any response to anything? It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we, we take no exception to the professionals' reviews. The one thing I will just point out, and thank you, Mr. Fusco, the existing site is raised, you could see for that three feet already there, so I think a lot of that has been addressed, the other thing is the sewer, there are no new utilities proposed to connect to the new structure, so it's just some piping for the water infrastructure to reconnect where it needs to, beyond that, there's no new utility service to the site. I don't believe there was any other outstanding issues to respond to, like I said, we take no exception to the comments from your professionals.
Bye.
Okay, thanks so much. Anybody else from the board have any comments before we open up the public?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, Dan, one question for you, you mentioned something before, there was, you asked a question about a consent decree? And the answer was it's a deferral agreement?
Yeah. A consent decree is basically when a utility, be it private, like Suez or public, for example, the Village of Suffolk, which actually was under a consent decree, is found to be in non-compliance, I think it could also apply to a private entity that has its own water systems on site, but it is basically a sledgehammer held over the head of the violating entity requiring them to get into compliance by DEC and sometimes it's fines and penalties are built into it. And the applicant's engineer stated for the record that they are not at that point. I would assume if they didn't come into compliance by August, that the DEC could take that as a next step and that they're obviously interested in avoiding that.
Right.
Although I don't want to speak for the applicant or their attorney.
No, that was a very accurate statement.
Very good, thanks, thanks so much, okay.
The, the only thing is that our regulating agency is Department of Health rather than DEC, we are not remediation side. So DOH, you know, we, we are constantly in communication with DOH because they are also undergoing the reviews of our plans, similar to what we submit to you, we submit to them, so there's a number of agencies involved. Everybody's looking closely at this project, it's in the public interest, you know, health and safety and when certainly you know, addressing all the comments and concerns in the most timely manner that we can, we have very tight deadline.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Other Suzanne?
Yes.
First of all, can we take off the screen share?
Erin, if you could take that down, thank you.
Yes, are there any important GMLs that we should read into?
Yes.
Anything besides unusual stuff?
There is a GML. When it was originally going to the August meeting, but they adjourned because of the variance, stated August 12th in the packet.
Yeah, I see that, so I'm assuming most of this would just be submitted to the record, but is there anything specific? Or unusual?
We could deal with that when they come back.
Okay.
Okay, I will say that I have about almost all the comments that they had requested here.
If you could just, if we've received any other agency comments, just the date and the agency.
Rockland County Sewer dated 10. Rockland County Sewer dated 10/14/2021. A DOT email to me on October 18th. They had no issues. Town of Ramapo Public Works, August 17th. There is an O and R updated letter as of September 13th. We have Valerie's letter of the Village Planner, October 25th, and the Village Engineer Alfusco, October 25th. And they did a response, the applicant dated October 19th in relationship to the responses from the previous submission and anything that I had gotten to them before October 19th.
Including the county's comments?
Yes. Including the GML. They, when they were heard at the October ZBA meeting, they presented, but because of the interest of time, it was after 11. We didn't read any of the ZBA letters into the record, and the board did not do a vote, but they're on for the November meeting, November 9th meeting.
They've already been to the ZBA. They don't need our referral now.
No, they do need your referral.
They do.
No, they were, there were, no, they've already went to ZBA, but we did, they didn't take action. It's a continued public hearing in ZBA for November 9th. They were heard last month.
We were adjourned at the ZBA.
Yeah, they got adjourned because it was, we had spent so much time with Dunkin' Donuts. They presented at quarter 11 and.
Okay, because I thought I was going crazy because I don't ever remember discussing.
We discussed it. They did a presentation, but we did not review any of the letters for ZBA or the GML for ZBA. And there was no action.
So no motion necessary. Okay, thank you. Okay, are we ready to open this up to a public? Go ahead, Suzanne.
Can I just say one other thing? They did go to ARC. I forgot to give you the memo. They did that in early August, which I'll put in the packet for the next meeting.
And I'm assuming the ARC approved.
Absolutely no issue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we can go ahead and open the public hearing? Okay, with that? Okay, make a motion to open the public hearing for I lost the name, Suez Water Treatment for Tallman Well Number 26. Have a second?
Second. I'll pick one.
All in favor, obviously.
All in favor?
If anyone has a comment, can you please raise your hand? Going once? I don't see any hands.
I guess everyone likes clean water.
I would think so. I would hope so. For the record, there is no one commenting for the public hearing.
Okay.
I have no objection.
Everyone's drinking bottled water for the next eight months.
I have no objection to the board considering the action that they took on the previous application to the same date and time.
Okay. So we'll make a motion to adjourn this public hearing for Suez Water Treatment, Tallman Well Number 26.
I would just, yeah. I'm sorry, I would just have to the board close the public hearing, bearing in mind that no one was here to comment tonight.
Okay.
I, I don't know if there's a need to close it. They didn't comment now.
Do we do that, Dan?
I wouldn't.
And if I'm, if I'm.
If nobody commented tonight, go ahead, Suzanne.
No, what I was going to say is they're scheduled for the November zoning meeting already. I think that they could come back to the November Planning Board meeting if they get their variance.
Okay.
And that's on the 22nd?
December meeting. That's all I wanted to say before you.
No, 22nd?
I'm glad you did.
Thank you.
Sorry, Suzanne, that's on the 22nd of November?
Yes, Monday, November 27th.
Monday, that's Monday, November 22nd, and that'll be at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Okay. Any final comments? Sorry, any final comments before we close this?
And Valerie, just to you know, make certain that it's in the record, this is a type-two action?
That's correct. It is a type-two action under Seeker. And specifically, one second. Specifically, it involves the construction or expansion of a primary accessory, non-residential structure or facility involving less than 4,000 square feet of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning or use variance consistent with local land use controls.
Thank you. So no further action is required by the board with regard to Seeker.
That's correct.
All right, but we did have a motion, so I think we heard about a motion. November what?
Okay, yeah, go ahead, John.
I was going to second. It's November 23rd?
November 22nd.
22nd, Monday.
7:00 PM via Zoom. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Thank you, everybody.
The risk of, well, I want to thank you for your patience and the risks, and certainly in light of my ignorance of your procedures. But is there any possibility that you would at least have staff prepare a resolution so that in the event we get the variance, it can be acted upon at your next meeting? We are, I'd like to distinguish us from your one-of-the-mill applicant in that we have time constraints from a state agency, and we are trying to do this in the public interest. And again, I thank you for your patience and your curiosity.
Okay, then I'll let you weigh in on this one. Dan there?
Al? Are you there?
I'm here.
You think you and I can and thou can possibly attempt to do that?
I think we can. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll try. We'll definitely try.
So Yossi, you got a couple fans behind you there.
Yes.
Hey, boys and girls.
Our future planning board members.
There you go. That's what I want to do when I grow up.
Exactly.
We're all very excited, so there have. Yeah, I can tell, looking at them.
Okay, so we made the motion to adjourn, right? We did that?
No, we didn't, we, not the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there new business first? Any new business?
The only new business I had was to confirm the dates of the meetings, which we've done already. I just want to remind, I haven't seen anything on the training other than the training from the Westchester Planning Federation. But if, if I get anything, I'll forward it, but Rockland County Planning does have your emails. So I just want to remind everybody of that, and session two comes up around the fall in November, so we'll, we'll see if something comes out. And I suggest everybody, if they can, to take that session.
Okay. So we'll keep an eye on our emails.
Yes, and if I get something, I'll forward it to the board as well.
Perfect. Is there any other new business?
No, I don't have anything new.
Nothing? Okay. Yeah, so I make a motion to adjourn tonight's planning board
a second.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thanks so much. Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, good night. Bye-bye.
Good night.